I'd like to call this meeting of the, the first meeting of the year for the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners to order. I am Lawrence Castenbaum. I'm the county clerk of Washtenaw County. It is my, my duty to do this once a year, every, every January. We'll start with the roll call.
Commissioner Beeman.
Present.
Commissioner Hodge.
Present.
Commissioner LaBar.
Present.
Commissioner Light.
President.
Commissioner Machieski.
Present.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
President.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Somerville.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
All right. Now let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and a God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, on, on your agenda, there isn't any space between item two and item three, but the item two and a half is the swearing in of the commissioners. Each of you is starting a new term today or as of the first. And you each have a, an oath card, which you will sign at the conclusion of the swearing in. I, just a couple of things about the oath card. I'm going to say as we're, as we're doing this, I know that, that that you solemnly swear, but if you are of the mind to refer to affirm, then simply use the word affirm instead of swear at that point in the, in the. And the other thing is that the last four words of the printed, the printed oath are not part of the constitutional oath of Michigan for elected or any public officers. There's not supposed to be any religious content in it. So the last word of the oath is ability. So I'm, I'm not going to ask you to stand because I realize what a questionable appearance it makes on the, in terms of where the cameras are. So I will ask you all to right now, the, the nine of you as commissioners to raise your right hand and repeat after me, I do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States and the constitution of this state. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of county commissioner according to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Now, this is, this is, this, this moment is my opportunity to impose on you all by making a few remarks about the coming year. I wanted to remind everyone what a great privilege it is to work for this outstanding county, Washtenaw County, a constituency that I'm sure is the envy of, of elected officials in many places. That we have an engaged community. We have a highly educated community. Washtenaw County is approximately, I think, the number 10 most highly educated county in the United States out of 3,000 counties. And we have a county that has great support for the, the kind of work that we're doing here. I also wanted to mention that this is the first board under the new redistricting plan that was adopted in 2000, you know, basically for the 2002 election, I mean, 2022 election, I'm sorry. And, and to emphasize that I, as, as one of the five people who created that plan or adopted that plan, we, we made a, we made the decision to have a, to essentially to continue the nine districts as they were with, with minimal changes. The, there's a great deal of continuity between the districts previously and the districts now. And that is taken and is appropriately taken as a vote of confidence in the work that the nine of you have been doing. So I, I certainly, I expressed my appreciation for that. And I think that the five of us on the, on the apportionment commission share that view, even though it wasn't a unanimous vote on the proposal, but. The other, another thing that I want to remind you all about is that a legislative body accomplishes things only as a group. The nine of you are all very different people. I know you, most of you pretty well. But you know, what you say and what you do in the, in this meeting room, that's part of your job. But when you leave the room at the end of the meeting, what's accomplished is what the group has accomplished. And the, I have seen too many instances where the, you know, the egos of the individuals involved and the, and you know, the, the board, the, the process, the decision-making process can break down. And everybody says, well, I at least, I voted the way that was necessary or something like that. And, and but your accomplishment, you don't, you, you, you have no individual power here. All of the power is through the board as a whole. That also said, we have some uniformity around this table. Every one of you selected on the democratic ticket. Not every point of view that exists in this county is represented here. You know, not to say that you should be embarrassed about what you believe in. You were chosen by your district to represent the district at this table. And you should do so, but you should bear in mind that you're here to govern the entire county, not just the people who supported you or the party that supported you. You should take care to know your district and know your constituents to realize that there's more diversity of opinion out there than you may be aware. And pay attention to that, not necessarily that you would agree with it, but be aware what people's concerns are. And it's very easy as a commissioner, and I know this, having served myself on two different county boards, Ingham County and Washtenaw County, that it's very easy to be kind of out of touch with your district to not, especially when you're representing a city district where there's very little. There's not the sick kind of constant awareness that you're out there representing them on the county board. People don't think about the county that much where too many people were at invisible level of government. And just a couple more things. One of them is that when I was on the board in 2000, in this board in 2000 to 2002, and if someone had asked me, you know, is there a real estate bubble? And I would've said, absolutely, there's a real estate bubble. But I didn't take that so seriously as to think about the implications for the county's budget. And that our, that the run-up of property values that we were experiencing at the time was going to come to an end and require retrenchment. We may be coming into a similar kind of situation and the, the, I think that the apportionment report and so forth from the equalization director is going to be pretty encouraging this year because it reflects what happened a year or more ago. That I think that we should be, I, I advise you to be cautious about expanding the county's expenditures and the expectation that it will continue to be there. And then another, I think, happy note is that we have a new legislature of whom several of the members are veterans of this body. I'm very, very pleased about that. There's a new majority in the legislature, new initiatives, initiatives and new bills and so forth are going to be proposed. And there's going to be a different attitude toward local government and toward county government than we've seen in the past. And so I, that's one of the reasons, one of the many reasons I'm looking forward to this year. I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you. My door is open. I am always available or almost always available to speak with you. If you have any concern, you want to sit with me, you want to meet with me, ask me questions, send me email. I'm, I'm, I welcome having that kind of interaction. What's more, I'm open to that from any of you in the room, you know, if you're here, if you're, if you have a question about, about the clerk's office or the county or the history or something like that. You know, my email address is online. Just send me a message or call me up. I'd be happy to, to deal with it. So again, congratulations. We're going to proceed with the meeting now. Item three is public participation and Andrew is going to assist with our Zoom callers, people who may be participating without being present in the room. Andrew, do we have people waiting to speak?
Clerk, if I may, our, the practice of the board has been to take the in-room participants first before going.
Okay. All right. Does anyone here wish to speak to the board of commissioners? Please step up and state your name.
Hello, my name is Zachary Story and a question I have for you is how many people are unhoused in Washtenaw County right now? Anyone? Dealer?
I'm sorry. I didn't understand the question.
How many people are unhoused or homeless in Washtenaw County right now? Sorry.
There will be a commissioner follow-up to citizen participation following this section of the agenda. So that will be next. Anyone else wish to, wish to speak before the board? Anyone else? Welcome.
I'm Lee Tousen. City of Ypsilanti. I'm here tonight to congratulate all of you. And a special congratulation to Annie. She served in my city as a councilperson. And now she's serving in my county as a commissioner. And I wish the greatness for her. And she will succeed. She was born by the river in a little tent. And just like a river, she been running ever since. It's been a long time coming, but I know change was gonna come. She would go to the movies and she'd go downtown. And somebody always telling her, we don't want you around. It's been a long time coming and I know change gonna come. It's been hard living. But she didn't want to die. Because she didn't know what was up there among the skies. It's been a long, long, it's been a long time coming. But Annie, I knew, Annie, I knew your change was gonna come. Congratulations.
I, I, I've been in public life for more than 40 years. I think that was the best public comment I've ever heard.
Good evening. My name is Joanne McCollum. I'm on the Washtenaw County Rural Commission. And I want to congratulate everyone that's being sworn in today. And I'm looking forward to working with everyone. And thank you so much for doing such a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicole Brown and I am the new mayor of Ypsilanti. And I just wanted to, thank you. And I just wanted to come and congratulate all of you and also that you know that I look forward to working with you so that we can continue to move things forward. I'm really excited about this body. I am close and know many of you very well. And so I'm just very, very excited about the future of our county. And in particular, of course, the work we're going to do in Ypsilanti. So thank you all so much.
Hi, I'm Sue Schenk from Northfield Township. Just want to say congratulations to everybody and especially my commissioner, Crystal Light. And I wanted to let you know also that in my role as state senator, I hope to be working very closely with all of you. Please never hesitate to call or, or any, ask for anything that this county needs. And I just, I'm so excited about the work you're going to do. I'm just really excited about all of you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Tajlee Hodge from Ypsilanti Township, park commissioner. And I would like to congratulate everyone for their reelection or election to the county board. I'm very excited. And I just wanted to acknowledge that we do have a majority minority board and a majority woman board. I think that's very exciting for our county. Thank you so much for all the hard work you do.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Andrew, is there anyone on Zoom?
There is no one with their hand up at this point, clerk.
Okay.
I spoke too soon. Hands are going up right now. The first speaker will be Alicia Dyer.
Hey, everybody. Alicia Dyer, Washtenaw County. I just want to say thank you all for your desire to serve. You know, this past election cycle was a lot for so many of us, whether we were fighting for our voting rights or reproductive rights and even on the local level. And I want to say I'm proud of everyone. I'm, I'm really excited to see what's going to happen with this county board moving forward. And my utmost congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk, if you could, just one second. We want to make sure that the audio is playing clearly in this room as well. The audio is playing in the hallway, but wasn't clear in the room. I guess I do want to check with the board to see if we would need to ask to repeat if anyone had a hard time hearing the last speaker. No? Okay. One second, please. Okay, clerk, the next speaker will be Michelle King.
Go ahead.
Good evening. I just want to say congratulations to everybody.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
We're having a hard time hearing you in the room. Okay. Michelle, can I ask you to start again?
Absolutely. So good evening, everybody.
We're still having issues with hearing you. One, one second, please. Michelle, can you please start again?
Okay, is the volume okay now? I just want to say congratulations to everybody. I look forward to working with you. And thanks for your service.
Michelle, my apologies. We're still unable to hear you in the room. Just one second. Chair, if I may, I, I would suggest that we maybe try one more time with the technical assistance. Folks at home are able to hear us okay. And if we're not able to hear from Ms. King, we can reach out to her at county administration and get her comments and make sure that those are shared with the board and in the meeting materials after the meeting to make sure that her comments are heard.
Okay, proceed.
Michelle, would you please try one more time?
Absolutely. So good evening, everyone. I just want to say congratulations. I look forward to working with you all in the future. And thank you for serving.
I think.
Is there anyone else on the, on Zoom?
There is not.
Okay. So that, that concludes public participation. Is there any commissioner follow-up to citizen participation? Commissioner LaBar.
Thanks, Chair. There was a quick question in regards to the homelessness count. The continuum of care, which is, which is a county entity lists that as of November, at 371 individuals experienced homelessness. I, I don't know the accuracy of that. I suspect it's higher. It is a good reminder that the, the real focus of county government is human services, including homelessness services, both directly and indirectly. So I appreciate that question being asked and I think join everybody here in terms of continuing our efforts to try and address them. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll proceed to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports at this time? I see none. So we are going to the special order of business. The oath of office has already been completed. So now is the election of the chair and vice chair, starting with the chair. Are there nominations for election as chair of the board of commissioners for the coming year? Commissioner Machieski.
Thank you, Kirk Castenbaum. I would like to nominate Commissioner Justin Hodge to be chair of the board of commissioners.
Justin Hodge has been nominated. Is, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? All right. If not, all those in, in favor of electing Justin Hodge as chair of the board of commissioners for the coming year, say aye. Opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations and welcome to this seat.
All right. Well, thank you, Clerk Custombaum, for chairing the meeting. As always, I watched a few of the older meetings that you've shared for us over the last several years, and they're always fantastic. So thank you for taking the time to, to do that for us. Uh, I have a few words to say later, but there's several other items of business and keep going with that. So we're going to move on now to, uh, election of a vice chair for the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners, taking nominations for vice chair of the Board of Commissioners.
I would like to nominate Caroline Sanders.
Okay, Caroline Sanders has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for vice chair of the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none, okay. All in favor of Caroline Sanders to be elected vice chair of the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here at none? Congratulations, Commissioner Sanders. Okay, well, we are going to keep on moving on. So we have another, uh, item of business here. We're moving on to a resolution adapting the rules and regulations of the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners. So for those of us, uh, in the room and at home viewing, those are the rules that we as a board operate by. Uh, it's a fairly lengthy document that I know all of my colleagues have already looked at, so, uh, I would look for a motion to approve the rules and regulations of Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners. Okay, any discussion on it? Any items that you'd like to see have a discussion about or any amendments to it? Not seen is this roll call? This was a roll call vote, okay? Robert?
Commissioner Beeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Light?
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie? Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah.
Commissioner Somerville?
Yes.
Item passed.
All right, thank you. And it's a, it's really good reading. So if you haven't read our rules and regulations and you got some free time, you want to take a look at that. Okay, we're going to move on to election of standing committee officers in accordance with board rules and regulations. Uh, so for this, we have two they're going to be looking at. The first one is going to be chair of our working session. Are there any nominations for chair of working session? Uh, Commissioner Robbie? Okay. Right. Is it support? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations. All in favor of electing Commissioner Somerville? No longer Councilwoman Somerville, Commissioner Somerville to be chair of our working session. All in favor?
Aye.
Right? Any opposed? Here at none? All right, eyes have it. All right, our next item here is to elect a vice chair of working session, and I have a nomination of my own. I want to nominate Commissioner Labar. He is, uh, brings a wealth of institutional knowledge to the work and, uh, really benefited from that during my first term in leadership, uh, and would, you know, like to have him vice chair our working session. Are there any other nominations? Here at none, okay. All in favor of electing Commissioner Labar, vice chair of working session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here at none? Congratulations. All right, I'm going to move on to another piece of business here that is less exciting. Uh, it's exciting for all of us and it's exciting for the work of the county, but I have to go through and read, uh, a long list of appointments appointing us to our various committee assignments. Uh, so we are gonna, we're gonna move forward with that. Uh, this is under item seven, under appointments number one, a resolution appointing commissioners to various boards, committees, commissions and agencies for various terms. Uh, we're doing a first wave of these now and then stay tuned for our second meeting in January for the rest of those. Uh, do we need to get a motion? Okay, get ready. I'm going to go start reading through these. So first, to the agricultural lands preservation advisory committee, we'll be putting Commissioner Light. For the area agency on aging one D executive board, we'll be putting Commissioner Somerville. For the board of health, we'll be putting Commissioner Scott and Commissioner Hodge. For the board of public works liaison position, we'll be putting Commissioner Machieski. The brownfield redevelopment authority, uh, Commissioner Hodge. Coalition for action remediation of dioxin, the card, uh, Commissioner Robbie. Mission on aging, the Commissioner Somerville. Community action board will be commissioners Sanders and Somerville. For a community act or community mental health board will be Commissioner Somerville and Labar. For statutory drainage board, commissioners Hodge and Robbie. For the emergency medical services commission, commissioners Machieski and Commissioner, or Commissioner Scott. For the emergency telephone district board, which is a very popular one, we have commissioners Labar, Beeman and Scott. For the environmental council, that commissioners Somerville, Robbie and Scott. For the health emergency response coalition, Commissioner Labar. Homeland security task force, sounds like a cool one, Commissioner Scott. Huron River watershed council, Commissioner Somerville. The local development finance authority for Celine, Commissioner Beeman. For the local development finance authority for Superior Township, Commissioner Somerville. The local development finance authority for Ypsilanti Township, Commissioner Hodge. For local emergency planning committee, Commissioner Scott, and there's a second spot that, uh, we'll be putting somebody on in our next meeting. And for the Michigan State University Extension Advisory Council, Commissioner Sanders. For the Parks and Recreation Commission, Commissioner Robbie, and we'll be putting a second person on there in our next meeting. For the police services steering committee, commissioners light and Sanders. For the retirement commission, we put in Commissioner Hodge and we need another person on there. So hopefully someone will volunteer in the meantime. Yeah. Uh, we're on for the Washtenaw Area Transportation Policy Study Committee, Commissioner Sanders. For the Washtenaw County slash city of Ann Arbor Community Corrections Advisory Board, Commissioner Somerville. For Washtenaw Urban County, Commissioner Hodge. The Washtenaw County Food Policy Council, Commissioner Sanders. And for the Willow Run Airport Zoning Board, Commissioner Hodge. Oh, and I missed one. Whoops. Uh, we looking at the road commission. For the Washtenaw County Road Commission Liaison Position, we putting commissioners Sanders and Light. Got them all. Excellent. Is there a second? Thank you. Uh, all right. Any discussion about those appointments? Think, no? We're good, we're good. Okay. This is a roll call, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Light?
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie? Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Somerville?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeman?
Yes.
Appointment's passed.
Excellent. All right. Look forward to more of those. All right. You should look at our boards and commissions. That's where a lot of the magic of county government takes place. There are plenty of vacancies on a number of them for residents. Uh, we make more appointments for those in the second January meeting as well. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Uh, looking for someone to move the consent agenda. All right, any, any discussion? None? Okay. All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed? None. Great. We'll consider agenda. Uh, under resolutions, we have none. And report from the county administrator?
No report?
No report? Okay. That's unusual. Thank you. Okay. All right. So that brings us to the report, uh, of the chair of the Board of Commissioners, which is me. So I have a few, uh, words to share. Uh, and I, I won't keep us here too long, so I'm going to go through this, be pretty brief. And then we'll, we'll go on to enjoy our evenings. So I want to thank, uh, first of all, the voters for putting their trust in me to continue serving them for another term. I just want to express my gratitude to my colleagues, uh, for believing in me to lead our board. I'm deeply humbled and honored, uh, by, by this. And so I know it's an incredible responsibility. I'm very grateful for all of you, um, for placing your trust in me to be able to do this. And of course, I want to thank my family and friends for their tireless support. Uh, serving an elected office can be very difficult at times. Uh, not of our meetings are really fun like this one. I mean, it can be challenging. And a lot, a lot of the work is right. I know this is a great meeting, but a lot of them can be really challenging and the, and the work that comes in between can be very hard. So that's between the daily challenges of the work and the necessity to be available on nights and weekends and holidays and the public scrutiny, uh, that all of us are very much aware of, uh, that comes along with it. It's work that really can't be done alone. And most of all, I want to thank my wife for, for her love and support and encouragement truly makes it possible for me to be able to do this work, uh, because it's our stuff. So I want to talk about, uh, the commitments that I want to make to all of you during my time here as chair. To my fellow commissioners, I commit to being accessible and collaborative and communicative. I intend to work with each of you as closely as you would like to be able to achieve all the goals that you have. And for being able to better serve, uh, the residents and all of your constituents. I believe our board works at its best when we're all united and we're focused on making the entire county stronger. I commit to doing all I can to facilitate us in doing that. And to our administrator and the administrator, administrative team, I commit to being a collaborative partner. Just as you, uh, work in, to support the staff and the board, I will support you in doing the good work of the county to the best of my ability. And to our countywide elected officials, which we have, uh, many of them here and several were here earlier too. Uh, I commit to growing the partnership between the board and your offices, uh, to the work that, the work that you do is critical to the functioning of the county and to the extent that we can be helpful. Uh, sometimes, and there are ways it could be unhelpful, but to the extent that we can be helpful, uh, I believe our board should really be part of that. So please call on us to be able to, to join you in that partnership. And to our amazing staff, I commit to doing my part to make Washtenaw County the best place you've ever worked. Uh, our county delivers world-class services because of your work. And I want every staff member to feel appreciated and valued here. And finally, to the residents of Washtenaw County, I commit to doing everything in my power to help make our home a place where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. I started my career as a social worker at a community mental health. And that experience working for county government taught me how powerful the force for good it can be in people's lives. And the partnerships with our local governments and community partners, we can combat the housing crisis, we can combat food insecurity. We can disrupt community violence. We can ensure the delivery of critical human services. We can improve health outcomes. And we can improve the economic outlook for our residents. We can do all of that and more to help every person in Washtenaw County lead the best life possible. And I've committed to partnering with all of you, all of my colleagues, our staff and every resident to make that a reality. So thank you all and looking forward to working together this next term. That's it. Then moves us into items for current and future discussions. Do you might have an item for current or future discussion? Oh, okay, Commissioner Labar, I think I saw you first. There, you want to give to commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Sanders, he's being very kind and gesturing to you.
I was asked, and I'm going to keep the promise to just remind the, the listening public that the United Way's twenty, uh, one day equity challenge starts on January ninth and goes through January twenty ninth. And if people would please consider participating in that, it would be greatly appreciated. That's it. Thank you.
All right, that could be challenged. Commissioner Labar, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair, and congratulations again. Uh, just wanted to give a, a quick welcome to, uh, Commissioners Light and Somerville. Uh, it's, it's great to have new folks on this board. Uh, Commissioner Somerville, I know you are not new to public service, but I think you'll find, uh, as great as city government is, uh, county is truly, uh, also great. And I just wanted to give a, 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 a quick welcome back to, uh, Commissioner Robbie. I had the uh, pleasure serving with Yusef for two terms before, and we are well-served by somebody who knows, um, not just the ins and outs of Washtenaw County, but candidly, uh, the, the world of Lansing that we have to live and contend with. Uh, and aside from that, generally Yusef is a friend, and so I have some, uh, you, you know, admiration and respect for him and yada, yada, yada. But Yusef, it, it, it is good to have you back, sir. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Items for current and future discussion? Seeing no other items for current or future discussion, we're going to move on into pending items. We have none because it's our first meeting of the year. So I move on to adjourn to the next session. Is there a motion to adjourn?